... which is saying, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Friends, neighbors, welcome to afternoon day's planning commission meeting. Would you like to get out of the seat? I'll start with your head.
Okay. Commissioner Benjamin?
Here.
Commissioner Holt? Commissioner Demond?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
And Chair Hernandez?
Present.
Everyone's present.
Excellent. So, we have the... Next item on is the approval of the agenda. I understand that one of my colleagues is not going to be able to participate in the discussion on the 719 Main Street project. So, I'd like to request that we just move the Planning Commission communications before the public hearing. Any... Do I have a second?
That's fine. I also wanted to request that the Alcatraz Avenue consent item come out for a brief conversation.
Let me actually pause for a moment. So, we have a change in what we've done in the past. We're using a consent calendar, which is the first time we've used that since I've been on the Planning Commission. So, in short, the items on the consent, the assumption is we've read it. If you want to pull an item from the consent calendar and bring it up for discussion, then you can. Jill, is there anything else to add to that? Great. So, if there are any other items you'd like to move from the consent calendar and bring up for discussion, now is your opportunity before we approve the agenda.
So, just point of information, basically, we have conversation about it and we can decide some either to approve it or do some other action. Is that correct?
And it's... Let me share a little bit. And we don't have to do this again. This was a... An experiment following your retreat to try to streamline things and get to the regular items. That said, if you wish to go through all of them, let us know. We already know Mr. Russell has also requested an item to be pulled, and I was going to report out about that. And that is the emergency permit for the tree at Ocean Colony. So, both emergency permit items I hear now are pulled for a little bit of discussion. Do note that the items that we put on your consent calendar tonight are not necessarily decision-making items for you. They are acknowledgement that you have received these reports. In particular, the emergency coastal development permits, there's requirements in your zoning that these be brought to you when they have been issued and they are made available to the public. And the permits are sitting there on the counter. And so, I just... I wanted to note that also because it isn't the same as having a yea or nay kind of a project to look at. Okay?
Thank you.
So, I heard there's a second item. The second emergency permit is also going to be pulled. Okay?
So, motion to approve the agenda with the changes of those emergency CDP items and the one you mentioned earlier.
I will second that.
Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay. The next thing on our list is what I think everybody's gathered here for, which is the election of the vice chair of the Planning Commission. So, do I have any candidates for the vice chair? Anybody who'd like to raise their hand? Typically, John, you would be the next person in line, but based on previous discussions, I'm under the impression that's...
Glad to pass that on to someone else, yes.
So, we have two new... Typically, then, one of the two new commissioners would be eligible.
I'd be happy for Brian to do it, and I'd be glad to do it myself, so I'll let him decide.
I'd be happy to serve as well.
Great.
I nominate Brian.
I will second that.
Can I get a vote on that?
Aye.
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 Great. Okay. Congratulations, Vice Chairman Holt. Moving along, we have the nomination of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee member. So, we actually have a series of... We have two of these. We have both a Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee member and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee member. Jill, do you want to comment on that? I think we know what these are generally, but...
I'd be happy to. Carol Hamilton is here. She will be the liaison to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Council formed the committee at a recent meeting and appointed the community members who will be representing a range of bicycle skill levels such as recreational riders, commuters, et cetera. Folks who walk a lot throughout the community, a senior representative, a representative from the Cabrillo Unified School District. And we are still recruiting for a youth representative. The two other appointed reps would be to... From within your group, assign somebody to serve this committee. The Parks and Recreation Committee becoming a commission will also be asked to do the same thing. We anticipate, and as your staff report noted, probably close to monthly meetings in the first year, but tapering down to quarterly. This first year, this committee coincides with the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan that is kicked off that we've mentioned to you previously. And if you'd like info on the bridge, I can do that, too.
Jill, I have a question on that.
Yes.
From a process standpoint, I presume that anything that this committee proposes or something will come back to the Planning Commission.
That's right.
So...
That's right.
Basically, the person on the committee is a liaison or just a hearing board. I'm just trying to make sure that we all know what our... The process is and...
Yes, but you will also be... You know, if there is a consensus vote, you will be part of that action. But I think the committee... You know, this is a newly formed committee. Many of these members haven't served before, so having seasoned Planning Commissioners and Park and Rec Commission members is going to help the committee a lot.
What's the structure of the committee? Is this going to be an organization with a chairman, like that type of...
Yes. Yes, it's a Brown Act group. It's substantially similar to the function of the Planning Commission. It's big. There's 10 members. And it's advisory to the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, and City Council. Oh, there he is.
Ultimately, they were formed as advisory committees, not as... I know the commissions, right? It's sort of a parallel of the process. Great. So, I heard one night a week or one night a month.
One night a week. I don't know.
What days are you planning on meeting? Do you have a set schedule?
We have a... I believe our first session is right around the corner. Yeah, we were looking at Thursdays. And the last Thursday of May, May 25th, we were trying to get our first meeting in May to coincide with some input that our consultant needs for the master plan work. The committee's going to hit the ground running.
Jimmy?
So, thanks. It sounds to me like, having been through the G-PAC for a while, one of the things that a seasoned person can bring to this is helping the group hit the ground and travel fast and carry some weight because of their understanding of the opportunities and the relevant constraints so they can help them head in the right direction and avoid, you know, ratholes. And given that... I can think of two members of the Planning Commission who are ready bikers, one of whom we just assigned a new responsibility in the last item. So, without having had a chance to forewarn you, I'd like to nominate you to be our Bikes and Trails Committee Representative.
I... Vic, my wife wants to volunteer on the committee, so I might brown myself out of the participation.
You can both do it.
There's at least one other bicyclist here. I wonder if you have interest in this, Les?
Sure.
I'm happy to be a second to Les.
Good. Great.
In that case, I'd like to rescind my nomination and nominate Les for that, and you as an alternate.
So, can I get a second?
Second.
Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Les. Okay. Okay, now we have the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee member. So... We'll use the two minutes on you for this one.
My honor. There we go. Green. Green is good.
Hey, Jerry, one of our members. The Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee basically is continuation of an existing committee but was reappointed and re... Basically, reconstituted as a result of the 18-month timeframe that was provided to the original appointment. So, we are looking to... We have right now, we're... We've got some dates scheduled with... That we're trying to narrow down and nail down with Caltrans for a site visit. The big issue for us on... In terms of the project itself and where it is, is just figuring out whether we have money coming this coming fiscal year or whether we're waiting out for fiscal year time for starting design and environmental work. So, right now, the workload is unknown for the committee itself. That will be very dependent upon what we get from a decision that should be forthcoming from our friends at Caltrans about whether they're going to let us get money in advance, which is normal for them, or not. But with that said, this group is going to be assisting the council in defining, to some extent, always the scope of this project, although much of that's been defined by the grant itself from Caltrans and the federal government. Be assisting in outreach to the community. Many... A number of the members are representative of either the Chamber of Commerce or owners of businesses or operators of businesses in the downtown area. So, that's a big piece of this. It's just informational back to the community. And then ultimately, to assist the council in the process of dealing with the environmental side and the environmental document to be prepared on this. So, that's the role. And six of the members were reappointed, so we have a strong contingent of folks that have been through this already and been working through with staff and the council. Three new members and then a fourth new or... But a fourth member being the Planning Commission member.
So, I know you don't have a workload now because you're waiting on Caltrans, but assuming the grant comes through, what type of commitment are we looking for and how often would this organization?
We still are anticipating no more than a monthly, once-a-month meeting on that as usual and as normal. There may be a situation in which there is a little bit, you know... There's some ebb and flow to that, and it might be a couple of times in a given month if necessary or a subcommittee or a committee. But primarily, we're looking at the most once a month, and it may ultimately be less than that, but no more on average at once a month.
Do any of my colleagues wish to volunteer to help with this important project for our historical Main Street Bridge?
Especially something with significant architectural impacts in the community.
Which has longstanding ties to our community.
And practice in that committee already.
Having been on the committee when it was originated, I found that it was a little bit challenging and kind of difficult to... It was a little invasive in my own professional practice, the time involved and the way the committee went. So, I really encourage one of the other Planning Commissioners to be on this committee.
So, through the chair, this is important work. The council has identified our greatest priority this year, as we discussed earlier, the local coastal program. I'm hopeful that in an upcoming meeting, we'll have a chance to focus. As I'm already a member of the G-PAC, and I'm not sure how much... How active that will be, but I'm hopeful that there'll be an active LCP process that I can fully engage in. I'm a little reluctant to pursue this opportunity. So, I'd like to nominate you again, see if I can rope you into that one.
I'll take that one, but I'd like to ask somebody to be a second for me. In the event...
I'll offer a second, Rick.
Great. Okay. Great. That's fine.
Do you want a motion or any of that?
Sure.
So, the second was Les?
Brian.
So, I moved that our appointment to the Main Street Bridge Committee from the Planning Commission be Chair Hernandez with the alternate Brian Holt.
Second.
Second.
Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Right along. Okay, so we have the approval of the minutes from February 28th. I was not present for that meeting. Chairman, Acting Chairman Demond?
And through the chair, I was also absent, so I'll be recusing from that. I will abstain from that vote.
So, since I was chair, I will hopefully get a approval by the other two members of the group.
I move to approve the minutes of February 28th.
I would second.
I'm done. Item closed. All right. Okay. Now, we have everybody's favorite regular item, which is the Planning Manager's Report. Jill, take it away.
All right. So, very quickly, community development department activity. These are recent director approvals. We've had three single-family homes, one single-family addition, and the Francis Beach Campfire Center have all gone through the community development director's hearing process. Also, we reported this to you a while back now, and just a little update on Pacific Ridge. Their plans for the Phase 1 building permits are on the verge if they haven't already been issued. The Phase 2 and 3 portions of that site are in for final map review. Our engineers have been going over those. Now, with respect to items of interest for the Planning Commission, first of all, we would like to thank Commissioner Demond for taking on what is almost an emeritus role as vice chair while we were not quite there yet. So, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Recently, the Parks Master Plan had their kickoff. It was an open house before the Parks and Recreation Committee. It was on April 26th. It was here. It was nicely attended. Commissioner Demond stepped in, too, so that was great. The consultants received a significant amount of input. They also had an online survey underway, and it... Many, many folks participated in that up through May 5th, and so we'll have a summary of that report as well in the future. As you know, we have now formed a B-PAC. That's the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee and the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee. Just again, want to note, the B-PAC's first meeting is set for May 25th, and that also happens to be the last week of National Bicycle Month. Hyatt House. We wanted to let you know that the City Council approved an agreement for an environmental impact review consultant. The consultant is Circle Point. The commission saw an early version of the proposed hotel at a study session back in October. You will see this again with an environmental impact report, and we'll keep you posted on the steps for that process. With respect to forthcoming emergency coastal development permits, it's been an active year. We're expecting some middle for an application to address the peers that have become exposed at the Ritz Carlton Bluff, and we hear that's coming in very, very soon. Your upcoming meeting, items from May 23rd, our intention at this time is to bring you the capital improvements program, and we will have a presentation of that. It was done similarly last year. You will be asked to consider the projects for the fiscal year 1718 relative to general plan consistency. For retreat follow-up, we will bring the bylaws that we plan to bring to City Council for their approval to set you up with those, similar to these other groups as we discussed. And we will kick off with our first local coastal land use plan. We promised a study session, and we have an idea for how to do that, and we're pulling that together to have a very productive kickoff. And we've already talked about how the consent calendar works. I was going to talk about that now, but you already did it. And in the future, we may... If we keep that, we may make an adjustment to when public forum occurs on the agenda and a few other things. So, just give us feedback if you have it. I prefer an email from you if you can, so thank you for that. And that's our report.
Jill, I had a question about the repair work that was done on Poplar Beach. Was that work... Did that work require a CDP or was it an emergency CDP?
Early name.
Okay. Very good. Somebody may want to go look at the grading and the impact that's happened since the gradings come in. There's a little bit more erosion as people...
Pipe?
The last... No, the last five feet from the beach to the trail, there's... It's difficult to get down, so it's worth taking a look.
We are... That will... That will require a permit.
Okay.
So, we're aware and we're working on that next step with them. And Jill and I are headed up to the Coastal Commission next week to talk about a number of things.
Thank you. And thank you because it's a lot easier to get down most of the beach. It's much safer than it was a mere three weeks ago, so I know that happened.
Maintenance did a great job.
So, with respect to the CIPI item coming up, I just noticed that Scott had sent me and I presume other members of the Planning Commission a copy of the areas where we had a potential conflict of interest. And I hope that the conversations about capital improvement can be organized so that we can participate, you know, to the fullest extent we can, and we don't have to, you know, hobble off the stage ad hoc. Thank you.
I will say this, Commissioner. I think we're going to have to talk to legal as well about the issue of public projects versus private development projects and the issue of how the FPPC requirements apply to those because I'm not convinced that... I don't think that was the intention, whether the... But we'll have to look at how that shakes out because there's times where no commission could take an action on it, given that there's so many capital projects around.
Right. And if we have to draw, you know, there's a process, right? You can draw lots, and you can get a quorum if you can't get a quorum.
Yeah, there's a whole process. So, we'll talk to legal counsel about that.
Thank you for your sensitivity in covering our hindquarters.
Yeah. Thank you, John, and thank you, staff, for the consent calendar. I'm sure it will get all of us home before midnight, so greatly appreciated. That said, we had a couple of items that were pulled, one of which we have a comment for. So, I think this is... Yeah, this is Jerry's Steinberg. So, the question is, which item should go first?
To follow the format that the City Council takes, we would recommend just sort of abiding by that. So, it would be nice if you could go ahead and take your action on the consent calendar with those two items taken out. That's 2 Marimontes Point Road and 6 Alcatraz Avenue. After you address the remaining items on the consent calendar, then I would suggest going ahead and finishing it up. Now, this is a deviation from council. They usually kick those to the very end of their meeting, and I think that these can be done pretty quickly, and it'd be more efficient for you to do it.
We've also changed the agenda so that we could address issues so Commissioner Evans can participate.
That's right.
So, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So, I'd like to get a motion to approve the consent calendar except for the two items, the two emergency permits that we've removed.
So moved.
Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye. A second?
Aye.
Aye. I think I made my own motion there. Okay. Just trying to... All right. So, why don't we take the first one and... Do you want to start with Jerry? Which one is Jerry?
That's a public forum comment. I'm not sure that's...
A particular item?
Yeah. My understanding is that the applicant, Bruce Russell, is here to make a comment on that true removal permit. And I don't... Bruce, did you do a card? It's okay. You're our applicant, so that... Yep.
Go ahead, Bruce. I was confused. This didn't match with either of us.
Am I on? Thank you. This is with respect to an emergency permit that was issued to remove a large branch from a tree in a riparian area on the golf course. And I wanted to come to express to you, we appreciate the staff's dealing with this urgent matter. It occurred during the storms this winter. We had a lot of storm damage. Appreciate the staff conferring with the Coastal Commission staff. We have elected not to proceed with the work, and I want to communicate why. Because I think going forward, there's some issues here in terms of management of trees and vegetation on the golf course. The removal of this branch from a riparian area, no doubt, a sensitive area, not just the normal part of the golf course, would probably have cost us about $3,000. With the biological and other conditions imposed, we're looking at a cost of probably in excess of $20,000 to remove a branch. This branch is affecting... It's close to the coastal trail. It's close to the bridge. It's close to an area where people wandered down to this riparian area. There are... There have been some homeless encampments there that we've had to address. And the reason why we haven't done the work is because of the cost. Is it a safety matter? It's a close call in terms of the tree affecting other trees near it. A branch has fallen into another tree. That tree's right next to the bridge, the coastal trail. We're very sensitive to distinguishing between riparian areas and coastal resource areas and other parts of the golf course. The city has a heritage tree ordinance that probably needs to be addressed soon. It has some aspects of it that aren't quite functioning right, in our opinion. But this is not just a normal heritage tree removal issue. This involves whether or not a coastal development permit is necessary. An emergency permit was issued here. And how this fits into the coastal resource conservation ordinance that you have. And my only point would be that although I'm... We're very sensitive to doing work anywhere within an environmentally sensitive area or riparian area, and we would not do any work in those areas without ever contacting the city and processing the appropriate permits, not all work within a riparian corridor or within the coastal zone requires permits. The critical word is development. Both under your coastal development permit ordinance, there has to be development. And the only development that would apply here would be the removal of major vegetation. In our opinion, a dead branch hanging off a tree is not necessarily major vegetation. When does vegetation become debris? We remove a lot of debris from the golf course all the time. Under the coastal resource conservation ordinance, that also requires development. If it's not development, it's exempt from the ordinance. And there's no definition of development in that ordinance, unlike the coastal development permit ordinance. And so, it's really a critical issue for us. We would like to... We maintain enormous vegetation on the golf course. We mow lawns. We prune trees. We remove dead trees, and we have a lot of dead trees because of the pine canker. And in riparian areas, we are much more sensitive to the biological issues and the species issues. But I guess the point I want to make is not every piece of work that occurs in a riparian area is necessarily requires special permits. This is not the KEO ditch. This is the removal of one branch from a dead tree. And so, it's very difficult for us to turn a $3,000 tree branch removal process into a $20,000 biological species analysis. And I think going forward, we would like to engage the staff in the city in discussions about where those lines get drawn. It's not that we're not prepared to process the appropriate permits, to do the appropriate biological analysis and the species analysis, but removing one branch from a tree that's... biological analysis and the species analysis, but removing one branch from a tree that's been severed during a storm and is presenting some safety issues is not necessarily development. And that's my comment.
I'd like to thank you for your comments. Just a point of order, this is an agenda item, so we can have an open discussion on this. Okay, so I'd like to open up for questions?
Yeah, I'd definitely like to hear staff comment, Jill or John Doherty, in terms of how they view this, just to get a feel for people that process these. So could I get some comments and then maybe?
Could I make one more comment? I'm sorry. I want to make it clear that I think the staff in this situation conferred with the Coastal Commission staff. I know the staff members that they conferred with. Whether everybody at the Coastal Commission staff understood the issue exactly, I don't know that. But I don't think that, I'm not here to criticize the city staff. I understand that the Coastal Commission staff was pretty insistent that in a repairing area, everything requires a permit and everything requires certain, you know, biological and species analysis. I have not personally conferred with the Coastal staff over this issue, and so I don't know exactly what their interpretation of the physical condition was. But I want to make it clear that I don't, I think that it's fair to say that the staff conferred with the Coastal staff, and that was the input they got.
I did have comments, but I was going to wait and let Les's question get answered. I'll get, thanks for asking.
Let me just speak to, I think, the most important issue. We've been, staff has been out to the site. We applaud the efforts of, frankly, of OCP for coming forth and requesting the removal and putting that forth. I want to be on the record clearly that we've looked at it, our in-house, our brist has looked at it. While we would prefer that the tree, the branch and everything be removed, we do not feel that it's posing a significant hazard or threat. If it was, we would be taking a much different posture and stance on the issue of ensuring that this, that a follow-up permit or whatever was processed and proceeded with, and we'd have a conversation much different with that. So that's really, I think, the heart of the matter in the immediate imminent kind of issue. Is there an imminent threat? We do not believe that there's an imminent threat. Would it be good to have it removed? Absolutely, yes. It's close to the bridge, it's close to the trail, but we do not feel that it's a significant threat to the public health and safety. That being said, clearly, as we talk about the local coastal land use plan, coastal resources work, and all of these issues that come with the next step in the general plan and LCP update process, these are all fair game to have a conversation about, and will be part of that conversation. And clearly, I will say this in closing, it's tough because you want to be able to ask the question, because you don't want to find yourself in a problem, in a potential litigation, appeals, whatever it may be out there, because you didn't ask the question of the Coastal Commission staff. That being said, even to their own admittance, sometimes they say, you know, "Don't ask us." So that puts us in a very difficult position of what to do on this, and I think Scott took the right steps and asked the question, because this was a very unique situation and everything. Unfortunately, the answer came back the way it came back, in a very stringent and very strict interpretation of the absolutes, and that's where we stand. And I think we're sort of at a stalemate on the issue. From our perspective, thankfully, we don't see it as an imminent threat, but it pointed, it pointed out some significant issues and challenges that could be a real problem down the road, and we need to address and look at how we address that within the coastal resources and environmental resources and ESHA and all of the different aspects of the LCP work that we do. Jill, do you have anything?
Thanks, John. Jimmy?
So, yeah, thank you, Bruce, for coming down and helping us understand that. From my perspective, I, you know, I certainly wouldn't speak to the comparison item, but I will say that it's, to the extent that the cost was the driver in your decision about what to do about that, it's a shame that our process, that we don't have a lighter weight process that we can go through, and that's certainly something we should be thinking about as we do this. Because if you think it's a judgment about the balance between public safety, then, you know, you shouldn't be penalized for being concerned about that. And so we need to think about the right way to approach that. And we'll certainly, I hope, keep that in mind as we work through our LCP revisions. So thank you for coming tonight.
So, to be clear, the city staff has taken a position, the city has taken a position that the tree doesn't pose an imminent threat, it's not a threat to safety. I guess the question is, looking at the city's position, I mean, it sounds like we don't have a position on whether or not a permit would be required, which is why we asked the coastal commission, coastal commission for, or sorry, environmental impact. Or what are we doing here?
So through the chair, my understanding is that we're acknowledging receipt of the report and nothing more, so I'd like to move that.
Okay. Is there anything else we can do at this point to?
No, that's the gist. Staff believed we needed a permit, and really that the key issue was what kind of follow-up would be required. And I think what Commissioner Benjamin just said about a lighter, I don't know what you, I didn't write fast enough, a lighter process, the concern is that this could be done with a biologist on site. So we'll be bringing this to staff with the Coastal Commission as well, because we want to be able to move more quickly, if there is a more threatening emergency, obviously, and to have an affordable process.
Okay, great.
If I could, Chair, I'm just wondering if staff has explored any level, I can't imagine that this is necessarily an isolated incident, especially with the storm damage that's happened. So if there's some level of, you know, a programmatic sort of look at how we tackle these types of maintenance situations, and if there's some level of a programmatic permit, maintenance permit, that can be issued by the Coastal Commission or something like that, that can allow for a streamlined process for these sorts of situations.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, it's a very good suggestion. So we have a motion to close this item?
Do we accept the report?
Do we accept the report for this item? Okay. Can I get a second?
Point of information before we do that, since it was pulled, is that moot? I mean, it's on the agenda, but the applicant, in effect, has pulled the emergency permit, so I'm just trying to make sure we're.
Yeah, what are we doing here?
We, the city issued the permit. You've seen it. We'd like you to acknowledge that you've seen the permit. The applicant is choosing to not act on it, and that's a separate matter.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge that we've seen the, seen this. Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, moving on to the next item.
Yeah, I brought that back, and the reason, I have no reservations about the Alcatraz demolition, and I appreciate the report that we received from staff, and I'm happy to acknowledge it. There was some text in the, in some of the attachments that referred to both the demolition and rebuilding. And I just wanted to be sure the record clarified that the, that the CDP, emergency CDP was strictly for the demolition. And second, it indicated that the, that the CDP, the regular CDP that's supposed to come within 60 days of the issuance of the emergency one, is, it was identified as one that would be an administrative CDP in the text, and my sense is that it would not be, since it's right on the bluff top, and the bluff top is, well, I mean, it's been eroding in that area, so there's a good argument that it's at the mean high water line, but it's certainly at the bluff. I would expect that as a minimum to come to the Planning Commission, if not to the Coastal Commission. So I just wanted to be sure that the clarification for the regular CDP was that it was not, it was not going to go through the same administrative channel.
Absolutely not. That wasn't the intention. If the language isn't clear, we'll take a look at it.
It might have just been a dangling modifier, and I read it wrong.
Yeah, that was not the intention. I do think we're going to have some challenge getting a, getting an application in within 60 days of this issuance from state parks. And the rebuilding, any kind of rebuilding, any kind of construction, other than securing the site and removing the utility connections, is, that's only the part of the scope of this permit.
Right, and it's not that I think the process would have served badly in an administrative way, I just think that our rules don't seem to permit that. So with that, I'd like to move acknowledging receipt of the emergency CDP for Six Alcatraz Avenue.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I get a vote?
Yes.
Yes, aye.
Okay, next item, public comment. So I have public comment by Jerry Steinberg. For those of you who wish to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, you can fill out one of these green cards, or you can just go up there and fill out the green card now, but this is a time for public comment.
I'm kind of used to the format for the city council with the three-minute limit, and I haven't heard any buzzers yet, but the topic that I'd like to talk on is the findings by Caltrans that the Highway One pier, or the permit engineering evaluation report, has to be revised and resubmitted to Caltrans. And I just picked that up from your active project list. At present, there's $2,500,000 committed from Pacific Ridge for the proposed signalite and the widening of Highway One in the vicinity of Terrace Avenue, agreed upon by the settlement agreement. There's also $3,500,000 from the San Mateo Transit Authority being held for the past several years for this same project. So we have a total of $7 million being held for this. For a project of this scope and controversy, the method of obtaining a Caltrans permit would appear to be by a project development review rather than a peer review. Peer review is a shortened method and does open up a can of worms and a bunch of other stuff. Because of the three-minute public comment time restraint, we have made comments, we made copies of some of the questions raised on the proposed project description for your review. There's also additional, many additional issues that we will be submitting for your review on this issue at a later time. So what I'd like to do is just have someone here pass these out and read, and then, yeah, and send to Caltrans, and some of the issues, just some of the issues. And I know that Jimmy and a number of other people are very familiar with this project, been involved with it for many years, more like eight or nine years. So the issue that I'm trying to raise tonight is that this method, this peer review method, if you were to go to the manual on peer review, you'll find that it's to be used for projects over $1 million, but the engineer that made the presentation at the city council meeting indicated there was a limit, a maximum limit of $3.5 million, and there's more than that being, will be spent on it, because there's retaining rules, it's a pretty elaborate project. So, and also mentioned in the code is, this is an issue, if it's controversial, you don't do it by a peer review, but I'll let you buy the manual and review it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. City, the city staff have any comments on that? Thank you for the reading material. So I'm going to close public comment. The next item is item 1A, an application for a coastal development permit, use permit, architectural review, and parking exception to permit construction of a new two-story 4,411 square foot.
Through the chair, we're going to do Planning Commission communications.
Oh.
Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, you're right. Thank you, John. Do we have any Planning Commission communications that we'd like to cover? Anything you guys would like to share? The one question I had, and I think we've discussed this before, for the Pacific Ridge project, there is a, and this isn't a discussion item, it's just a question for staff that we can take up later, but there's, my understanding is there's a requirement for, set aside for land and permanent open space, either for recreational purposes or as a nature preserve. But I'd like to, before we finish the issuing of the permits, I'd like to understand what is the plan for the land that's being set aside for Pacific Ridge?
I think we can, it's not on the agenda, so what we'll do is provide an update, maybe coinciding with city council's review of the final maps for phases two and three. That's a significant step that they need to undertake, and at that point, we can give you a summary of the project as a whole.
And I think there's also a funding element, or Pacific Ridge is required to fund that as well, so, okay.
Okay.
If we could have that information on the report.
All right.
Great, thank you. With that, I'm going to close public comment, and John, I think you're going to recuse yourself from this.
My pleasure to be on the Planning Commission, and a requirement, as you all know, is that we live in the city. Some of my neighbors are in the audience here, and Larkin and I live right downtown. It's a wonderful place to live, love living in a mixed-use area, and sadly, it's also, according to the FPPC, a conflict of interest for me to be involved in your project. And with that, I'll recuse myself.
Evening, and we will close public comment and move on to the next agenda item. So we have an application for a coastal development permit, use permit, architectural review, and parking exception permit to permit construction of a new two-story, 4,411-square-foot mixed-use residential and commercial building at 719 Main Street in conjunction with 711 and 717 Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This project was initially scheduled for April 25th, Planning Commission hearing, but was continued to tonight, and involves a mixed-use project at the address you mentioned So a little background, what's included in the project is demolishing the existing building on the site, as you can see on the slide here, and parking lot, and then developing a new two-story mixed-use project with two apartments on the second story, and then one commercial space on the lower story and associated site improvements. Permits requested, coastal development permit, use permit for the residential, architectural review, and parking exception. Permit history, the existing building on the site was built in 1971, and it's operated as a veterinary office up until recently. A study session was held by the Planning Commission, January 24th, in which the Planning Commission evaluated the design of the new, the new building that's proposed on the site. Since that meeting, the applicant has made some minor revisions to the project, included some additional details, resubmitted materials, and also added a lot merger with the property to the north as, within the project's scope. Story poles have been installed in compliance with the city's story pole policy. And just to, what I did here is just copied and pasted the, from the minutes, the items that were suggested by the Planning Commission at the, at the, at the study session, including, you know, adding some building articulation, explore additional outdoor space for residential units, provide a more developed. a more developed landscape plan, provide more defensible findings for the parking exception requested, and then also explore other options as opposed to requesting a parking exception. The site itself is within the commercial downtown zoning district, within predominantly developed downtown Hafmain Bay. And this portion of town contains several historic buildings, including 711 Main Street. The red's not really showing up that well on this. Behind the subject property is a developed, single-family residential neighborhood. Some key thoughts for the Planning Commission to consider is conformance with the general plan, local coastal program, the downtown specific plan, and zoning. So as far as the lot merger goes, you probably noticed that we did add a condition of approval requiring a lot merger to take place before the issuance of the building permit. This will obtain several things. One, it would allow the new development to have access to the existing parking lot that's behind 711 and 717 without having any sort of reciprocal parking agreement. And also provide some flexibility as far as the design. Given the historic significance of 711 Main Street, which I've included a photograph of here, sort of old and new, we did require a historic resource evaluation to be prepared by a qualified architectural historian for several reasons. To document the historic significance of 711 Main Street and 717, identify any potential impacts in relation to the California Environmental Quality Act, and to evaluate the new building as it relates, well, and lot merger as it relates to the historic buildings. And you may have read in the historic resource analysis that the historian did recommend some changes to the proposed project to eliminate any sort of false sense of historical development. The architectural historian also didn't note any impacts to the historic resource. So after reading through this and remembering back to the study session, we recommended that to maintain the detached clock. You know, that was a comment from the commission. That's one of the changes the architectural historian recommended. The other two were integrated into the changes that you're reviewing tonight, including distinctive siding and color compared to 711 and 717 Main Street, and eliminating the false dormer that was originally proposed on the building. So here you have a sort of a face-to-face comparison of what the Planning Commission reviewed previously and then how the design team has responded to the requested changes, including extending the eaves, eliminating the false dormer. And then note also that also added to the project was an additional street tree that's not shown on the rendering here. Bay windows were also added to provide additional articulation. And then this is just a blown-up version of what's proposed now. Same is included on the color and material sample. Here's the, it's sort of difficult to see on this slide, but you will notice in the plan set that a more developed landscape plan was included. You know, one of the major notes is the additional street tree on the frontage of 719 Main Street. They've also included additional landscaping in the frontage of 711 and 17 to help integrate both sites together. Drought-tolerant plants have been selected as well as minimizing irrigation. So in regard to the requested parking exception, the exception is, what they're asking for is an additional nine parking spaces as well as elimination of the two garage parking spaces per garage enclosures per dwelling unit. And staff is supportive of the requested parking exception and can make the findings. Part of this is to allow more design flexibility to provide appropriate distinction between the new building and then the older buildings to the north. The site does, you know, I tried to illustrate this with the line here, that there is a varying lot depth in this site, you know, compared, the south compared to the north, which is a unique circumstance that applies to this property that doesn't necessarily apply to others. Through the revision process, we explored many other options, had several discussions with the applicant on, you know, avoiding the parking exception, you know, potentially providing some parking on site. And the conclusion was is that it would not be feasible that in the end, even providing two parking spaces on site would jeopardize the project as a whole. We also did some research on other communities, coastal communities and other small communities in their parking regulations. One in particular that we found would allow the proposed development without any such parking exception. And that was noted in the staff report. So staff is supportive of the parking exception in that we can make the findings.
I just want to follow up on a couple of those things. One of the reasons why we looked at other communities is because Hafmain Bay does not yet have any mixed-use parking requirements. We're hoping to develop them soon. Many other communities do have mixed-use parking requirements and they're very effective. And the way the city's parking is set up now, it would actually require parking at a higher level than the actual parking demand for the use based on various parking demand studies. So we take the request for a parking exception very seriously. And as Scott said, we saw Carmel would just allow it. I saw other communities' ratios where the exception that's being requested would be more on the order of a couple stalls. I also wanted to just clarify one thing on this slide, Scott. I'm sorry to barge in. That nine spaces is the total. Those two covered spaces are not in addition to those. They are two of the nine. So I didn't want folks to be adding up to 11 here. Okay.
On that same note, thank you, Jill. One other thing I want to point out to the Planning Commission that noted on the site plan, two parking spaces are designated for the residential use. So those would be signed as part of this project. Couple other things to summarize. There are, I think this was mentioned earlier, that there are several mixed-use, similar mixed-use development within this portion of downtown. We would not be out of, you know, out of the ordinary to have, you know, a mixed-use project on this site. You know, certainly would be consistent. The project also conforms to many of the policies within the downtown specific plan, including preservation of historical buildings and establishment of mixed-use projects. The new building would provide a more pedestrian-friendly streetscape with a parking in the back, you know, utilizing the parking that exists in the back with no new driveway cuts. With the minor changes that the Planning Commission requested, staff is certainly supportive of the design that's being proposed tonight. Staff recommends approval of the project. The design team is also here. They'd be happy to answer any questions of the Planning Commission as well as I would. We recommend that you, you know, take public comment and evaluate any concerns brought up. And then this is the recommended motion that was taken from the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Do you have any questions for staff?
Scott, there are a couple of questions. I think I email those to you probably later than you would have liked me to, but...
It's quite all right.
In any case, when I'm reading through this for a second, third time, the width of the street that 711, 717, 719, how does the width of that street compare to the streets just north of that?
Well, you know, after you sent me that question, I took a little closer to the surrounding area. And it's all 60 feet, a 60-foot right-of-way up until the last block before the Main Street Bridge. At that point, it does widen a little bit, I believe, to 70 feet right-of-way. And that includes the sidewalks and, you know, not just the street, but the actual public right-of-way.
The reason I'm asking is just if they put diagonal parking, I didn't want that street to be any narrower than the other street. So that was my question or my rationale. Second one is, I asked the question, 711 being a historic building, what are the parking requirements for a building like that? I know it's a commercial building, but because of the fact that it is historic, does it really require parking based upon the current rules and regulations? Again, my rationale for this is there's a number of spaces required for the three buildings. And the question is, can we extract 711 because it's a historic site?
Yeah. And under our current code, the answer is no, that the space and the uses that currently exist in 711, a certain number of parking spaces are required for that particular use. And under our current parking code, it's four spaces. So, thank you.
Just a couple of questions, and then I'm anxious to hear from the public. So the first question, we have not talked very much about the light plane with respect to the neighborhood to the east. And I just want to touch on that. I don't know if it's a concern. When I looked at the story poles before, well, in mid-April, I was struck by the relative increase in the vertical, the daylight plane consumption by the building if you were in the neighborhood behind it. And I'm not saying that that's inevitable or illegal. I just want to understand how staff felt about that.
Thank you. Yeah, you may have noticed on the site plan, the building is set back five feet from the rear property line. And there is a provision in the commercial downtown portion of the zoning ordinance that requires an additional setback anytime a property abuts a residential zoning district. So there is the five-foot setback in the rear. It is going to be a change for the, you know, the neighborhood in the back, but it is in conformance with our code.
Okay. Another question. In our study session, we spent some time on the parking exception, so I won't belabor that point again. I'm interested in hearing the public. Perhaps they'll have insight into how the parking is used. But we did talk about the potential, and I actually saw in Mr. McNamara's comments, an offer responding to our interest in facilitating easier access to the coast by electronic vehicles, that is battery-powered vehicles through charging stations. And in the findings for the, that were proposed for approval, that seems to have disappeared. And I can't understand if something went wrong or it's still something that we should consider because it was appealing then and it's no less appealing now.
The idea of adding electric vehicle charging stations did come up in the conversation, you know, as this project evolved. And I think that would be an excellent question for the applicant to see, get an understanding of his willingness to install the electric vehicle charging stations. And if that is the case, then I think it would be, you know, something appropriate for the Planning Commission to consider.
Point of order, there'll be a chance, but it's not yet. Thank you. I'll hold my questions until after public communication. Thank you. Any other questions?
So should we move to public comment? I don't have, yeah, you're suggesting we move to public comment, but I think the applicant gets to speak. So, okay. I don't have any green sheets. I have quite a few people here in the audience. If you'd like to speak, you can go up to the podium. If you don't want to speak, you're welcome to just continue to observe, but for anybody who wants to speak, you can go ahead and go up to the podium now and speak and then fill out the green card later.
My name is Paul Bettencourt. I own the building right behind it.
Is the light on, a little green light on?
Yeah. My name is Paul Bettencourt. I own the building right behind it. And I want to know how he would like it if somebody built a house right up against yours and cut out the afternoon sun, what little we have of it. And as for the parking, why not make it like the other ones? Those are nice-looking buildings that are in there. And they keep, they kind of look better than an ugly thing like that. It sits right out to the street again. There's a setback. You can go buy it right now. There's trees out in front. It sits back good. It looks good. But it doesn't on that plan.
I'm Paul Sun. I live at 720 Johnson Street. And when they first put that flagging up there, I was aghast when I walked out there. It felt like I was walking into a prison. So it totally blocks the light. It's a total invasion of privacy. I'm vehemently against having a second story on the building. And with all the other businesses on Main Street, I can see all the parking moving over on the Johnson Street, creating issues over there. I know the mills, my next-door neighbors are against it, and so are the bruises. And so there's some other issues I also have, but that's probably with the designs. The elevation, there are no elevations on the drawings that I've seen for the slope and drainage because my backyard is lower. You know, I've had other issues with the 719 or 717 properties. Had to put a retaining wall in there, contain their dirt from slipping off into our yard there.
Are there any other, you indicated there are other items. You raised one, which was the retaining wall and drainage and the concern about the elevation.
Yeah, they have a dry well on the drawing, which to me would be introducing bacteria into the aquifer. In a regular well, you have to have a sanitary seal at 20 feet of concrete and a sanitary cap. They could put a bio-swell in there. Yeah, demolition dust and other issues, construction issues like that.
Okay.
Mary Bettencourt, I belong to them, but it's just the parking. There's just more parking, going to be more parking on Main Street. There just isn't enough parking. There's going to be two apartments and a business downstairs. That's at least six cars. The parking slot's full. Where are the customers going to park? Where are the apartment upstairs that the couple has a teenage kid living there? People would rather park on the street than in their parking garage. You look at other places where they don't use it. And with the IDS Hall and all the events they have there, they need, we need all the parking spots on the car, on the street that we need rather than building buildings without parking spaces. I just feel parking is a really concern and it's only going to, parking's only going to get worse for people.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comments? Thank you all.
Thank you all. Would the applicant like to speak?
Let's see, Mr. Benjamin, you were asking first about the... Oh, the electric cars. Yeah, we actually, you know, looked into putting a parking spot in the driveway for the evening use, but any parking on the property driveway has to be ADA compliant. Originally, where we had the electric parking, it was there, but it's, the driveway would have to be much wider to make that occur. But we are already in the process of outfitting a couple of electoral parking spots in the adjacent parking lot, which we've been planning to do anyway.
Through the chair, had you considered making charge stations available on the street?
Yes, we brought that up, but we didn't know if that was in our forego allowance or not, but we would be certainly happy to do that, too. Yeah. It's difficult, you know, when you build something, it's, you're trying to stay in compliance with all the rules in the town. I mean, I've lived in towns since '65. I care. You'll see the zigzag at the back of the lot there. That's the old alleyway right-of-way. Some people took advantage of it, and it ends up, sometimes it's split, and sometimes it goes one direction or the other. If that had been as it is on above in the lot next door, you know, the building would be far further away from the property, the Bettencourt's property, and it would be quite so. It would be more in compliance with anything else. You know, we tried to put in a building that is, has mixed use. It seems to be the direction a lot of, what, two-story towns like Halfing Bay are trying to go in. It certainly has, I think, a less, a smaller density than, you know, offices are, and more interesting than strictly just offices. And that's how we came up with the design. Anybody else have a question for me?
With that, I'm going to redirect it back to planning commission, and time for discussion. Brian?
Well, I'll start. I think, having been a part of the general plan advisory committee and having a number of discussions about downtown area, participated in the downtown specific plan that was prepared a number of years ago by students from Cal State or from Caltech, San Luis Obispo, you know, it's been just an ongoing conversation about increasing some level of density downtown and increasing and trying to expand the use down Main Street to some degree. And we've seen some of that with some of the activity that's gone down in the business operations that go down there, and I really support the idea of bringing that down and extending, extending the use on Main Street. I'm not as concerned about the parking concerns. I mean, I think parking's an issue. It's an issue in a lot of different places, but it's something that, that's, you know, shouldn't impede, you know, the good developments that come in. So I'm overall, I'm supportive of the project, supportive of the design, and I think it'll be a good asset to Main Street.
Yeah, I'd like to, I guess, echo the concept. I actually reread the zoning code over the weekend and the focus on downtown, and I underline a lot of words in there that, to me, in effect, the intent of the zoning code was to get mixed use downtown, to get both commercial, residential, so that, you know, people can live and work downtown, and certainly this, this project kind of fills that. I also noticed a lot of words that provide the planning commission with the flexibility, as well as the city council, on how to work that out. I think there's some issues that we need to focus on, and of course, it's the parking one. That's the, that's the main one. But from a concept standpoint, I do like the concept. I like some of the changes that were made, the size of the balcony and so on. Yeah, there are issues. This is a much larger structure than was there before. Of course, that other structure, it's not being used right now. The flat concrete structure certainly doesn't add anything to Main Street, so there's a change here. But the fact that this is a mixed-use area at Main Street, I think this project kind of hits the spot, at least when I read some of the words in the zoning code that were set forth a decade or two ago, so. But again, I think the parking area issue is something that we have to very closely address, but I'd like to say that until other comments are heard.
So, so there were a couple of comments. I appreciate the public's concern about the daylight plane in the neighborhood behind. I also live in a home far away from this, I don't have to recuse here, that is, a transit, it's transitory between different kinds of zoning districts. Actually, I should conjecture, I should verify that. Is the property behind it also CD, or is it residential?
So the property to the east of the subject property is residential?
Thank you. So there are, and there are challenges associated with living at the edges of zoning transitions. I think as planning commissioners, it's incumbent on us to encourage the applicants for development to work hard to minimize those impacts. So I'm going to ask, again, whether there's an opportunity for some kind of articulation on the east side that could somehow reduce the daylight plane impacts somewhat on the upper stories. I like the idea. Let me also speak to the public's concern and fairly to the applicant's concern about the parking exception, and staff has articulated it as well. When I read the text of the parking exception, it looked to me like it called, it didn't limit us to do everything we could for the proposed design that would be feasible without changing the design. It appeared to me that it could call for a different design to try to achieve the parking requirements. That said, I understand the approach that you're taking to try to address the parking. I do think that there are coastal access, broader coastal access issues that will be exacerbated if development moves downtown the way that Commissioner Holt is interested in, and fairly, I think, that the public has expressed some interest in. So I think to the extent that we can somehow counteract that impacted coastal access by limits of parking by providing greater access for at least some underrepresented kinds of visitors to the coast, that's really the drive behind my electric vehicle question, and I'm grateful for your interest in establishing charging stations. Personally, I'm not happy with our parking ordinance the way it stands today. I would like to put Main Street on a road diet and use additional space in a way that provides for better visitor access, and I think it could address the parking concerns that the Bettencorts and others here have expressed concern about. It's a little frustrating to me that this project is coming now as opposed to after the LCP update where we might have been able to address this. So I have, I must say I have some angst about that. But I would like to hear from the applicant about the possibility of mitigating the impacts on the daylight plane and get confirmation that they're comfortable with some charging stations at the, at Main Street as opposed to strictly for the residents.
I'd like to, if you'd like to respond to those comments, I'm happy to open the floor up to you again.
I'm hesitant to say, if we do articulation and we're back, I'm not getting a deal today and pushing our fellow server out, which is even harder to do. And I'm getting a lot of pressure to... There's a thousand dollars difference. And if there's something to do, it's all... Had the property, had the street back property, I mean, it was more than a lot of delay, but it's a tremendous amount of dedication to the back area. So the park, the residential backyard, the question was deeper, considering all the backyard, and we didn't see that. And, you know, we could change the real station, the real building, but it's going to be... I don't know that that, in and of itself, is a little bit hard to do in some way. We're going to change it. It's not going to make it a long story, but it's not going to make it, to change it, but it can, but... For footage, why, just about a minute, pencil down. I dealt with the last three developments on Main Street. The last three substantial developments on Main Street, the bridges and property, are the Francis Building, back warehouse office case, Alcatraz Day, works at Alcatraz now. The Giorgetti Building, where it works with right now. But I think that should be in this. If you're going to try to develop Main Street or the commercial areas now, that's going to be... You have to think that through.
Wanted to just all follow up on your questions, and actually, if we continue the dialogue, could I ask you to go to the microphone so the folks at home can participate? I think I'll provide my comments, which will give some color to how I see this. Number one, I think the, we asked for guidance from city staff on parking, so I think that between you and city staff, I'm not concerned with the parking. I know in general, parking is an issue that's raised. It's an issue that we experience when there's a lot of festivals or activity. We've had a lot of discussions on parking. It's something that we do take seriously, but I think there's, there are a number of things that we've done in terms of study sessions. This is more for the public who's here, but for this specific project, I'm not concerned about the parking because of the way you've creatively addressed it, especially with your willingness to put in the charging station, which I think helps with visitor access in different times of people coming here. So I don't know, I think part of Jimmy's question was, would you be willing to attach that to the project? I don't think you quite asked it that way, but...
You have to be right.
Yeah, I mean, if that's something, then if you're open to that, then I would add that as a condition of approval for the request, if we can add that as a condition of approval. The thing I was struck by when I biked by the project yesterday in the afternoon was the story poles are, you know, it's a large project. It's not, you know, it's within compliance. It follows the rules. And the thought occurred to me is, gosh, I would hate to be the person living right behind this project. I'd lose a little bit of my, I'd lose some of my sunlight. I understand the rules. Going back to Jimmy's question, is there, you know, regardless of the approval process, I mean, is there something you'd be open to doing to affect the articulation on that side of the building, to just improve the daylight plane? I mean, it adds up. I mean, right now, you've got a project that is largely, outside of the parking, is largely in conformance with, it is in conformance with current regulations, but I guess the question would be, how open are you to addressing the sort of daylight plane on that side of the building, please?
I'm not against it, but the point is, I'd hate to promise something, and it's not going to make much of a difference. When you're talking five feet of articulation in the back, that's not going to make the building a one-story building. It's not going to effectively change the way it blocks light or doesn't block light. Like I said, not without compassion and understanding for someone whose property is right behind it, I honestly. But there are building codes, and it does comply, as far as that part of it's concerned. And myself, I've had five houses built around me, and there's one every morning comes, you know, they hammer away at 7:00 AM, but they complied, and that does occur. I mean, we're replacing a one-story building with a two-story building. If I was replacing a two-story building with a two-story building, I'd be understanding. The one-story building is actually at the same depth of the building that we're complying, we're suggesting, so there's no change there. It's just that the one-story building isn't as tall.
Chair, so, thank you. I understand the answer. I also heard concerns independent of daylight plane with respect to privacy, and it's been a while since I've looked at the east elevation. I was going to look for it, but the comments stopped before I could get a look. Can you just remind me whether we have windows that are looking down on the east elevation that are not obstructed, looking into the backyards of the homes to the east?
Am I correct, Herman, there are no, there are no windows in the, in the...
Is there room for landscaping that would provide some additional privacy?
Well, there's only five feet. I mean, I could, we could put a bamboo fence or a, you know, or something hedging of some sort, but that's not going to, I think that'd be just as ugly in a way, yeah.
I guess from a privacy perspective, could you get frosting to glass or having some...
What, Herman, can you tell me...
What, what, Herman, can you tell me what's in that on the second story there?
Yeah, windows on the back, on the inside.
Are they in bedrooms or bathrooms?
Bedroom windows on the backside, you gotta study about it.
I think that might help. If I were living back there, I think it would help.
Certainly can make them more of a slit window for light, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, we're butting up against code on a few things.
We need to take a look at those egressable windows for the bathroom, the two bedrooms. Well, there's a study. You only have one room that needs egress in the back. We would really encourage, and it would be architecturally, in my humble opinion, appropriate to consider nice banks of clear story windows. They can be very effective. You'll get natural light. It doesn't look funny like a frosted window. And you won't have anybody peering into your backyard. They're very effective.
We don't want anyone peering down on you. I mean, I totally understand that. Trust me, when they put the poles behind me, I'm going, my God, what are they building? The poles look worse than the building usually.
And as long as we're both on the microphone, I just wanted to confirm, you're good with the electric charging stations on Main Street?
If we can put one on Main Street, I mean, you asked us to say as part of this condition, we will fund two electric charging stations anywhere you want. We'll put up the money. Uh, no, I, I'll be polite. Not a
Just a point of order. Just a point of order. I do appreciate the public feedback, but we try to, we try to run this as a hearing. With your, at your discretion, you're going to go ahead and respond to the comments.
We'll talk after.
Okay, thank you. So taking it, taking it back to the commission. Thank you.
So I heard generally, it seemed like there was some level of support and consensus for, for the project with changes for the, I'm sorry, Jill, what was the term you used for the back windows? Clear story? Yeah. Yeah. And the applicant's willingness to fund electric charging stations in the city, possibly in front of the project, but if staff deems that it's appropriate elsewhere, their willingness to do that elsewhere as well. Is that correct?
Hadn't really thought much about where. I mean, I'm just trying to keep the nexus of the impacts close to the nexus of the mitigations, which is why I was thinking in that area. But I, you know, if staff wants that flexibility, or if our council thinks that the nexus can be made anywhere downtown, I'll certainly entertain that.
Yes, please.
You know, I wasn't sure, because I had my focus on the 719 portion, but there are parking spaces in the front of 711 and 717. So we can make two of those electric charging, you know, somewhat spread so that, you know, it's not always vacant because not always there's an electric charging. And/or we could make one of the ones in the rear electric charging, perhaps like one on the street and one in the rear for the overnight.
From my perspect, I mean, from a point of view of marketability, for someone who lives there, you know, you probably don't need a fancy J 220, whatever it is charger. You could, they can just plug in with a NEMA 1450 and they'll be fine because they, they get a trickle charge.
So how about we say we'll do two in the rear of our existing parking lot and one on the street? Sure.
No, it doesn't. It would encourage an electric vehicle as a tenant. Well, in, I shouldn't, I'm sorry, through the chair, you need to be at the microphone.
Let's bring it back to the, to the commission, maybe.
Yeah, I'll bring it back, I'll bring that item back to the commission. It's a good point. So I, I just heard you, I just want to reaffirm this. You're willing to put in two charging stations in the back, presumably for people who are going to your business or tenants or
As Mr. Benjamin said, maybe the lesser grade charging station. We actually have a building in Burlingame and there are a number of them there already.
I mean, that's, that's really a very incremental cost. I'd be surprised if it cost you more than $200 to put in a
A little more, but we're happy to do it.
I did it for $200.
Yeah, but we gotta run the pipe.
Yeah, but we're, but I think that the, the public charging station is in a sense is what you're proposing, one on the street.
One actually on Main Street and probably, I would say, suggests in front of seven, one seven Main. Because we're, we're merging these anyway.
Would it, would it not make sense to make, to give staff some level of flexibility in determining the appropriate location, whether
I think that's where I was going to go, is let's, let staff work with the applicant. Also, I'd like to go back to the point of articulation. I know five feet may not be, may or may not be a lot, but I wonder if it's possible for us to, as part of the approval process, to direct staff to work with the applicant. If you come up with something, if it could come from administrative approval on the project, is that possible? If, if the applicant wishes to try to address the concerns about the daylight plane on the back, on the east side of the property?
If the applicant would like to come in with a revision to the roof line or some other aspect of the massing on the back of the top floor, we are perfectly capable of conducting design review for that within the realm of what we've heard. We, we could do that.
There's no need to come back for a separate
It's your discretion. You have to decide.
If it was, if the impacts were no greater, I don't think we need to see it again. I will say, I mean, I'm just sort of reading between the lines here. I don't see, you're anxious to move forward with your project. It would be great for you to make a good faith effort to try to find a solution with lower impact that improved articulation.
I just want to make it very clear to our neighbors that it won't really have much, it's more of a symbolic thing than an actual thing. The roof line change won't make a significant change in the building. It'll still have its same height, width and bulk. So, I mean, it's, it's a gesture, there's other gestures I'd rather offer my neighbors that they might appreciate.
I'm sure that you'll do your best to be a good neighbor.
And this isn't the appropriate venue to talk about those gestures.
Hold on, just talking, you know, reduce noise and dust and such or like that.
Now, actually, I do want to come back to a few, you have some, I have a few other open items.
There was one other open item, and that was, we talked about the preservation. One of the benefits of the project was that it enabled the preservation of the historic structures. Is there something in the conditions that actually affirms that they are, they are to be preserved?
Yeah, so as you read through the historic resource evaluation, the architectural historian did note that, you know, having a design that's unique yet compatible actually contributes to the historic integrity of 711 and 717 Main Street.
So they could still, I'm not suggesting
You know, it's, it's a unique line. A lot of, a lot of folks, you know, assume that you want to match the design of, of a new building, which is, is historically incompatible. So the new building would need to be, you know, reflective of today's, you know, building standards, yet be compatible and unique to 711 and 717. So that's, that's when you've, you know, met that threshold that's dictated by the Secretary of Interior Standards, so.
I think the question was, as a result of this process, is this now a historical building as recognized by the city?
The 711.
711, yeah. And is it, in other words
Jill knows the answer.
Yeah, go ahead, Jill.
So, yes, 711 is a historical building and on our inventory, and the, the project would not impact that historic resource, so. Does that
I think you're almost there. I think the key is that 7, 711 was already acknowledged in the city's database. And this report really confirms and updates that. And there are strict protections for buildings that are designated as such. So yes, this whole process, in fact, even if you don't approve the project, we now have a really nice report on this historic building and it, it affords it greater protections.
Thank you. So there were some questions about the dust and the construction. I think looking through the conditions of approval, we have standard, standard language around, around that, standard hours, which I don't, I think that's addressed in the document. I just want to make sure we've addressed all the public comments. There are questions about the slope and drainage. I don't know if city staff wants to go ahead and respond to that question and the, the comment about lack of elevations on the project plans.
So in regard to the, the drainage of the site, the, the standards today are much more strict than they were in 1971 when the existing building was constructed. The part of this project is going to be to, you know, develop storm water detention basin that can retain a certain amount of water on site as opposed to draining into the street. So that through the, the storm water management infrastructure that the applicant's going to, you know, install as a part of this project, the drainage will actually improve on the site, so.
There's a question raised about a dry well, concerns about bacteria and bioswale as part of the suggested feedback from, as part of that comment. Do you want to, I just want to make sure we're responding to
Certainly. So essentially, all new construction is required to install some sort of storm water measures. And that, that has never been a complaint in any new construction about any sort of bacteria or, you know, that being the case. And the, the applicant's contractor may be able to shed even more light on that if, on, you know, maybe, you know, perhaps, you know, or at least reaffirm that the, you know, that's actually the case, so.
Go ahead and open it up to you. Thank you.
Currently, the site is 90, 95% impervious. I mean, it's completely covered with asphalt and there's a building there. And right now, the water is not a problem. It's all directed away from the east. The new construction will be the same. It's, it's mostly going to be covered with, it's actually going to be more pervious. The driveway is, is a stone driveway, so we'll have pervious area there for the water to soak into the soil. So we're going to be improving the site quite a bit and we will be sure that the water drains away from you. And there's storm water management measures in place that are required and imposed on us. There will be a site drainage plan that will need to be submitted during the building submittal process. And I think the public is, you know, obviously free to, to view that during the, that process.
Thank you. I think we've covered all the public comments and the comments I have. I did want to thank the applicant for, and city staff for doing a study session in advance. We were able to address a lot of these issues in advance and you've added a lot, lot more texture to the project. I'm a little old fashioned, I guess, but I'd still like to see some knee braces, but that, you know, it's not my design call and we're not here to sort of go down to that level of detail. But the, the overall impact, I think, on the project has been, it's nicer. It fits in a little bit better than the previous project. So thank you for taking the time to work with us on that. And thanks city staff for encouraging them to do so. Okay, you're done with your comments? Or you have one more?
I'd be happy to make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve PDP 16055 for approval of the coastal development use permit, architectural review, parking exception to allow the demolition of the existing parking lot and single-story concrete building, construction of a new two-story building, 4,411 square foot mixed-use residential, and commercial building at 719 Main Street and a lot merger with 711, 717 Main Street in the CD Commercial Downtown Zoning District and the Commercial General, General Plan Designation.
To that, so the First Amendment was for the windows that staff had articulated, I believe the term used was clear story. Thank you. That's why they pay her the big bucks. The inclusion of two NEMA 1450 or greater charging stations in the parking area for the site and the inclusion of a publicly available charging station on Main Street. What else was there?
And to be, like, to be reviewed by city staff, all those, both of those things.
All of that to be
City engineer should be responsible for reviewing that.
And the invitation to, that you had asked for, for reducing daylight point impacts, did you want that in the motion?
Yeah, I'm not sure what we can include. I'm looking over to our legal for guidance here. I mean, I have a recommendation, maybe is what we can have, is that the recommendation that the applicant work with the neighbors to address the
Reduced daylight plane.
The reduced daylight plane.
Reduced daylight plane impacts. I think that was everything.
I think you've covered everything. I think legal and Jill are having a sidebar here, so we'll, we'll, I think we're good with that? So we have the recommendation of, that the applicant work with the neighbors to address the impact to the daylight plane.
So with those amendments, I will second the motion.
Can we get a roll call vote?
We can. Commissioner Benjamin? Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Demond?
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Absent.
And, that's right, sorry. Abstained. I apologize. And Chairman Hernandez?
Yes, approved.
Motion passes for
Item is closed. Project's been approved. I'd like to get a motion to end tonight's meeting.
To adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Yes.
Voice vote?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Tonight's meeting's over.